Mr. Berry, meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please? Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Here.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Here.
Commissioner Chavez?
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Present.
All right, we all join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right. We have a couple of visitors. If you have something that you would like to address, you can do it now unless it's on the agenda, then we'll... You're on the agenda. Very good. So there's a notice of potential quorum. The quorum of the Raton City Commission may attend the 65th Annual New Mexico Municipal League Conference, which is August 31st through September 2nd at the Albuquerque Convention Center. I know I'll be there and I'm pretty sure Neil and Lori will be as well.
Vote.
Yes?
Vote, please.
That's all. All right. Moving on, item 6A, deliberate an act on approval of the July 26 regular meeting minutes. Everybody's had a chance to read them, I presume?
I found no corrections, so make a motion to approve.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 22nd. All in favor... 26, sorry. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Very good. Motion passes. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-41, adopting the FY 2024 through 2028 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Berry, I'm sure you have his to say?
Mayor Commission, as we have talked about over the last couple of meetings, that is the time of year that we consider submission of the Infrastructure Capital Improvements Plan, the ICIP. That is a requirement from the state of New Mexico. In your consideration of the resolution, what would follow your approval is submission of the ICIP to the Department of Finance Administration. They did move up the deadline this year. Generally, we talk about this through September. However, this would be due in the next week or 10 days. And so, we are looking for the commission's action to adopt the ICIP. It is something we do annually every year. And as we talk about every year, number one, we welcome comments from the public or any person or any individual or organization as far as what they think is important for infrastructure. And this is a comprehensive plan. This covers all of the city's infrastructure and prioritizes infrastructure for the next five years. And then we also say that this is particularly important for funding requests such as capital outlay from the legislature. They really look at this and say, is that something you prioritized on your ICIP? Some other places, too. Generally, where you find state funding, you find some importance in the reference to the ICIP. It was a good planning document. Now, Mayor Protem and Commission, we have provided you with a draft of an ICIP that's very similar to what we had last year. And it's submitted for your consideration. You can do whatever you want to with the draft that's submitted. You can add items to it. You can delete items from that list. You can move them up in the priority list, or you can move them down. So we submit that for your discussion, your conversation. I think that I would say that's a recommendation from staff to the commission. But at this point, I would turn it over to the commission for your discussion, your consideration, and I would be available to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Any discussion? I know that the things that citizens have talked to me about are on the plan. One of those is public parks, and then, of course, the Bartlet Mesa Recreation Development Area and street improvements, as well as an urban renewal elimination of slum. So that's all on the plan. So I think what people have talked to me about is covered here. Do you guys have anything?
Yeah, I agree with that. I like the first 10. It's generally the ones that will be acted on to begin with. I don't know if you're ready.
Right.
I agree with every one of them so far. I think that it'd be great if we do everything on it, but the top 20 or so would be great. And I think it's a good plan.
Yeah. Lori?
Mayor Protem?
Yes. Yes, Lori.
I have a really hard time hearing Manager Berry and you a little bit. I don't know if you guys can put the speakers any closer. I can hear Commissioner Chavez pretty well. God, I could hardly hear it all. But I have reviewed the ICIP and it looks good to me. I like the priorities for this year and I am supportive of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything to say about it?
I've talked with Scott about it and I'm in agreement with what we've got listed. I think we're good to go.
Mayor Protem, just for the sake of the people present, and we'll kind of recap a little bit quickly of what we have talked about before.
Sure.
And so, the draft that you have in front of you is... And this is organized over a five-year period. And so when we talk about these first priorities, that would be in the next upcoming funding cycle. And then we break that down over the five-year period through 2028. So when you get to the back of this, really, we're saying that maybe it's not a lower priority, but it was something that we would be ready to do in subsequent years. So we've identified, the same as last year, that Lake Maloya Dam Safety Improvements is the number-one priority. And we've actually said that we're looking for $10 million for dam improvements in the current year. And we would anticipate turning that into a capital outlay request. And so that's something that we've done a lot of work and a lot of engineering, a lot of due diligence with the cooperation of the State Engineers Office, the Dam Safety Bureau. We've looked at spillway capacity as primarily the concern with Lake Maloya Dam. But there are a number of things. We have extensive engineering over the past five years regarding this project. And so we've listed that as a high priority. Bartlet Mesa Ranch Acquisition. Where we're at on that is we have worked with the two conservation groups that we had mentioned before, Trust for Public Lands and Nature Conservancy. We have about a $1.2 million shortfall right now from bringing that into the public ownership. And we do plan on, or I would recommend to you, that we seek at least $1 million in capital outlay in the upcoming legislative session and work on that. So we've listed that in there. Some other projects that we've talked about before, we are moving out of the Armex Building and we're really looking at a facility that we could use for evidence storage, specifically with vehicles. So that's listed on there. Drainage and storm drain system improvements, city public works, equipment purchases. And then we've also listed the 1-megawatt photovoltaic array and storage. And you'll recall that we plan on building the first phase of that. That was the RPS meeting that was held earlier today to get started on that. But to build the 1-megawatt, we would seek additional funding. So we've listed that on there. You can go down the list and see the... We have really everything in there: water system, wastewater system, electric distribution and generation system. Street improvements are shown. Now, currently, and you know, we've always listed street improvements as a high priority. We have a lot of street improvements funded, a lot going on currently. We've talked about that through the year. And so we have not shown that as a 24 priority, although we have grant applications out there that we're waiting to hear on, on current streets. We've got a number of really big projects funded that we're in design on. But we will see that in subsequent years, again, we mention streets as a high priority. And then lastly, on this front page, we have an item for urban renewal, elimination of slum and blight. And as we've talked about, we're taking positive actions on that. We anticipate submitting a grant application for brownfield funding through the US EPA. That... We would submit that in September. We have been working with New Mexico Environment Department as far as their brownfield program. We've got a little activity going. We did get demolition of the house on 568 North First Street that y'all talked about last time. That lot has been cleaned up and the hazard has been abated on that. But we do look at that being a high priority in coming years. Of course, when you're applying for US EPA funding, they're really not going to look at our ICIP. They have their own criteria, and we are putting that application together now. But that's a quick summary of the draft that you all have.
Very good.
Maybe not quick enough.
No, it was fine.
I make a... I'd like to admit that we approved the Resolution Number 22-41.
We have a motion to...
Present.
Motion and a second to approve section item 2022-41, adopting the fiscal year 2024 through 2028 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for the hard work. I know it's an annual hard work job.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that.
All right.
I'm glad to make Jason do it.
Yes. That's probably why he's sick today. All right, let's... Deliberate an act on voting delegate and alternate for the annual state conference. And that's what we've talked about earlier, the Municipal League Conference, held the end of August and the 1st of September. So I know I have... The last few years, been that delegate, and I'm happy to be again, but I'm also happy to pass the job on to anybody who would like to do it, so... Any volunteers?
Mayor Protem, I think you should continue to be the voting delegate. And I'd be happy to be an alternate unless Mayor Sagata wants to do that.
I can't be an alternate. I'm still considered an officer.
Okay, that's right.
Very good.
I'll make the most of it, Mayor Protem Schuster, be the voting delegate and that I serve as the alternate for the annual state conference of the Municipal League.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that I myself, Lindy Schuster, Mayor Protem is the voting delegate, with Commissioner Lori Chatterley is the alternate to the annual state conference of the Municipal League. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I believe we've moved on to item D, where we have people in the audience who are willing to help us talk about this. Deliberate an act on event forms that start with the First Baptist Church block party scheduled for August 24th.
Mayor Protem, Commission, just to give you kind of a quick summary of what is proposed. The type of event is a community block party. It's proposed for August 24th. There would be a street closure proposed. That would be one block of Rio Grande Avenue between Third Street and Fourth Street. And so that would be out in front of the First Baptist Church of Raton. You can see the form and the proposal has been reviewed by staff, approved by staff. Their recommendation is to the commission for approval. I think we do have some folks present. If you all would like to talk about your event, you're certainly welcome to come forward and tell us all about your event. And, if you could certainly ask any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Well, if you don't mind, go ahead, state your name.
I'm Jo Lynn Pafford, and I guess I'm co-chair of this particular block party for First Baptist Church. We are planning it to be a community event, inviting the community and the neighbors to come. We'll have different activities for children. We'll also be serving food and giving out some school supplies for the children and also have our registration for our Iwana program, which is a children's program that we do every Wednesday evening and for kiddos that are three years through sixth grade. And that's from 6:30 to 7:30 on Wednesday evening. So we'll have registration for that. We invite the community to stop by and participate and just... We like to get to know who you are and also register your child for the Iwana program. And then have fun.
Now, what time of day is this block party going to be?
Our block party will start at 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay.
And we're planning some water events, which is one reason why we wanted to block off part of the street in order to have enough room for the kids and the water and then have room for games and food. And so we didn't have the water in the food. So kind of have some room to sort of spread out.
That's a good idea.
This is a good motion that you guys have.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Thank you. And I cannot take credit of that. Our associate pastor's wife is the one that designed that. And we are... We did pass out flyers. We have postcards that we will mail out to children who have been registered in the past either for our VBS program or our Iwana program. And I believe some of the younger members are also working on an online registration and a Facebook advertisement. That's not in my wheelhouse, but there are some others that are working on that. If anyone has any questions, they may call the church office if they have any questions. And I did not bring my phone up here, and I don't have that memorized. Is it on the poster?
What's that?
So our church phone number... Yes, 35... Yeah, 575-445-3571. And we just really would, you know, extend that invitation to the community. We'd love you to come and meet and fellowship with us and let your kids have lots of fun. And we're having cotton candy and snow cones and popcorn and hot dogs and nachos and chili dot... All the really healthy.
Yes.
We made sure we have every food group, just the healthy ones, that are included in that particular menu. There's no fee. This is free to the community. And as I mentioned, we will be handing out some school supplies. We know that other organizations in town have also done that, and they have more of the traditional school supplies. So we decided we'd like to target the... Some that are a little bit more expensive, so Kleenexes, hand sanitizer, and then the wipes will be handed out to the kiddos. Grades, preschool through sixth grade for them.
And this is a Wednesday, correct?
It's Wednesday evening, August 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30. The front lawn at the First Baptist Church was at the corner of Rio Grande and Third Street.
Very good.
Very commendable.
Yeah. Any questions for these ladies?
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a great event for the community, so I'm looking forward to it. I would make a motion that we approve this request.
Very good.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the event for the First Baptist Church Block Party on Wednesday, August 24th, 5:30 to 7:30. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Aye, vote.
Motion passes. Well, thank you. Thank you for putting it together. Very nice.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next event is the Gate City Music Festival, September 3rd through the 4th. Is that all? It's just two days?
That's right, Mayor Protem. It's an event that we've had now over past years and, you know, kind of one of our most iconic events. It's Labor Day weekend that this occurs. I will read to you from the scope of the event that has been submitted by Raton Main Street. So the Raton Main Street Gate City Music Festival Committee proposes to have a music festival to be held September 3rd and 4th, 2022. The festival will be held along First Street between Cook Avenue and Clark Avenue. We would be open, including setup time between the hours of 12:00 PM, that's for setup on Friday, 8:30 and 12:00 AM on Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. We will have an entertainment tent set up on First Street and Park Avenue. We plan to have a beer and wine garden tent on First Street. Due to this, barricades must remain and streets must remain closed overnight. We will also have approximately 30 vendors that will be situated along the curbs on both sides of First Street, between the two crossing avenues, as well as in Heritage Park. We are requesting that the city blockades as per the map attached. I don't know that you have the map attached, but it's the streets that have been described. Gate City Music Festival volunteers will control vendor traffic for setup into and out of the area past the barriers. Otherwise, there will be no vehicular traffic in the area. Then they go on to talk about some of the particulars of the event, but I'll just wrap it up by saying we will also be having our headliner show at the Historic Schuler Theater on Sunday, September 4th, 2022. We're requesting four officers from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM as alcohol will be served. The event... Familiar with this. It has been reviewed by the staff. You have the certificate of liability insurance, and we recommend approval to the City Commission.
Yep. This is one of the best events of the year, I think.
I agree.
Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions or concerns? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we can...
I'll make a motion to approve the Gate City Music Festival.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. The Gate City Music Festival, September 3rd and 4th, be approved. So Commissioner Chatterley, Commissioner Jacomo beat you to the punch. Do you mind being the second?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Now, to fulfill that whole dream, we need to deliberate an act on the public celebration permits for the Gate City Music Festival. We're both blue... Can we do both Blue Dragon Brewing and Colfax Ale Cellar together?
Mayor Protem and Commission, I believe we can. You do have the public celebration permit application in your packet for two vendors, Blue Dragonfly Brewing LLC and Colfax Ale Cellar. This is a form that is required by New Mexico Alcoholic Beverage Control Division, and it does require approval of the City Commission. And we do have a recommendation for approval from the staff.
I believe we can do all three of them at one time, so make a motion to approve Blue Dragon Brewing and Colfax Ale.
Okay. It is only two listed, but yeah, there's three forms.
There's two for Blue Dragon. There's just two different dates.
Oh, I see. Okay, very good. All right, so it's been moved. Do I have a second?
Present.
Very good. Been moved and seconded to approve the public celebration permits for the Gate City Music Festival, including Blue Dragonfly Brewing and Colfax Ale Cellar. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Any opposed? Obviously not. We all said aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Next page. We're going to deliberate an act on Tri-West Quote for Fencing Project Utilizing State Price Agreement, number 20-0000-2100028. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protem and Commission, this is a cost proposal from Tri-West Fence LLC. We have asked for this cost proposal, and it's pursuant to the state price agreement that you had referenced for additional fencing at the Armex Building. And so this is in reference to the economic development project that we've talked about for some time. We are close to finishing construction on the greenhouse. We're held up by some electrical components that are difficult to get right now, but construction is about 90% complete. There are a few other structural pieces that we need to install there, but we're close to wrapping that up. However, we have an issue. We have about three sides of the property fenced off, and on the north side, that's where the... Where Raton Creek is, we lack over 500 feet of fence. So that's where this proposal to fence that off. Historically, over the years, we've had some bad actions at this building because of the ease of being able to come up out of the Raton Creek Arroyo and, you know, not really a very visible sight. So we are proposing to add the fence. It would be 564 feet of six-foot-tall chain-link fence and 116-wide double-swing gate. I would ask you to consider the three strands of barbed wire on top. And the proposal for that provided by Tri-West Fence Company is $30,056.14, including tax. I would recommend approval of the price quote.
Very good.
Shall we move?
It's been moved and seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the Tri-West Quote for the Fencing Project Utilizing the State Price Agreement. Is there any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, deliberate an act on Planning and Zoning Commission appointments. Yeah, two appointments, I believe.
Three.
Three. Oh, there it is. Third one.
Mayor Protem and Commission, we do have some business for the Raton Planning and Zoning Commission. They will meet on Thursday evening to consider a preliminary subdivision plot. That would be Anthony's subdivision, a seven-track lot that we'll look at. That will then come to the City Commission with the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. The City Ordinance provides for appointment of Planning and Zoning members, five Planning and Zoning members, by the City Commission, but the term is limited to two years. And so we do need to reappoint every member of Planning and Zoning Commission. We want to maintain a staggered term, so we want to appoint two of those for one-year period and then appoint three for a two-year period. We have not completed the process yet of giving you all of the applications. I would state that we have really a good experience planning a zoning commission, and if all the members would be willing, I would certainly recommend that we reappoint all five members. What you have in your packet today is an current application from Randy L. Madison that has served on Planning and Zoning Commission for some years and is currently serving... Has served as the chairman of Planning and Zoning. Richard Gertler, also a member of Planning and Zoning, and Debarks. You have those three applications in your packet. Mayor Protem, if I could, before we move on with this item, and I'm going to jump ahead in the City Manager's Report a little bit, but I'm pleased to announce the addition of Kevin Nolan to the City of Raton team. Mr. Nolan is present here today. He has joined the city as the city planning and zoning officer. Mr. Nolan is also a past member of our Planning and Zoning Commission and served as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission for some years. So Mr. Nolan is working under our code enforcement group, has joined our team, and he will work on some of the initiatives that we've talked about in the past. That includes our vacant building initiative. That includes our vacant building initiative, our brown field initiative, and our community redevelopment programs. And so, it's a big program. I think we're seeing some positive results in the community. We want to welcome Kevin to the team. Thank you, Kevin, for joining us and bringing his experience with the planning and zoning.
Yep, very good. All right, so we have three. Now, these three are we approving for two years? Or?
Mayor Pro Tem, I would recommend that we appoint these three for a two-year period, and at the next meeting, we'll have a couple of additional appointments for a one-year period.
Very good, all right. Anybody have any questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission Appointments for two-year terms. And that's the three are Randy Madison, Richard Gertler, and Dee Berks, who currently serve and are well experienced in the process. So, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Very good. All right. Lamar, Item H, Lamar Billboard Lease 532-1 on city property located at I-25 East, right? L-, dot, dot, fifty, NMP 450, MP 450.5.
Mayor Pro Tem, that is referencing a location on Interstate 25. And you can generally see this billboard if you're northbound on I-25 between the South Interchange and the bridge that crosses at Hurford Avenue. It would be east of I-25, visible to northbound traffic. I'll give you a quick overview of this. Michael Ann Antinucci, city clerk, has handled this issue for the City of Raton. She can correct me on the things that I get wrong, but generally, the billboard is located on city property. In some years, we have actually been paid to put a city advertisement on there, and I think the most recent would be the Tourist Information Center. So, that's not part of this transaction. This transaction would be limited to the lease of city property to Lamar, and they would be willing to pay the city six hundred dollars a year in annual lease payments. And, Michael Ann, remind me of the term of the proposed agreement?
Five years. So, the term is twenty twenty-seven.
And so, if that's the proposed action here is you would be leasing that space for continued operation of this billboard that is located on city property.
Very good. Any questions or concerns? Anybody want to make a motion?
I think a motion could be approved. I'd like to hear a couple of the, 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 the.
All right. In case you didn't hear, Commissioner Giacomo just moved to approve the Lamar Billboard Lease. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good, motion passes. Thank you. Rocky Road Gravel, Item I, Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling Change Order Number Two for Byron and Whittier Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, the Byron Whittier Project is a project that's currently under construction. It's funded by a municipal arterial program grant from NMDOT to the City of Raton, something that we've talked about for a couple of years. Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling is the contractor building the project, and we have negotiated Change Order Number Two for this project. Generally, there are two items that would be covered under Change Order Number Two. First of all, we have a couple of culverts crossing drainage area at East Colfax Avenue. We have a couple of bigger culverts there. The contractor was not able to procure the culvert that was specified by the engineers. The culvert that they did provide was generally a thinner wall thickness than was specified and a little different corrosion protection package. So, we're proposing to provide a deduction, a pay deduction, that would be the cost of the material, not the work, labor, equipment, but the cost of material would be the deduction. In addition, we have seen the cost of hot-mixed asphalt go up significantly since we started the project. Rocky Road does buy this hot-mixed asphalt from another vendor. They're subject to a fairly fifteen percent cost increase, and so, they have requested an increase to account for that inflationary issue that's beyond their control. They've asked for an addition of ten thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Let me see if I can find the deduction in here. We're proposing a material deduction related to the corrugated metal pipe of five thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars. If you balance those two things, we would have an increase in contract amount of five thousand sixty-two dollars. And that is our recommendation to you for approval of Change Order Number Two. We would pay for that out of the street improvement gas tax.
All right. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Make a motion to approve Change Order Number Two, Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling Change Order Number Two for Byron Whittier Project. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Now, moving on, same thing, but Change Order Number Five for Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling.
Mayor Pro Tem, this would be in regard to our CDBG project. That's the downtown road improvement project, the DRIP, we like to call that. And we are bringing a proposed increase of the contract price of twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. That's on, in rough dollars, about a million-dollar construction budget for the project. You see in the Change Order Number Five, five items that have been listed by the engineer, that's Engineering Analytics Incorporated. The contractor is the same, Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling, however, separate contracts, separate project. I think that mostly these items are related to the construction process, and in five blocks of the project, we milled old concrete pavement, pavement that's been there since the thirties or forties. We milled the top of that off. We put a tack asphalt coat, paving fabric, and then a hot-mix overlay over that. It's really not something that we have done before, and generally, what we found is there were some areas of that concrete that's generally older than seventy-five years that we could not complete that process because of the deterioration of the concrete. So, generally, these items are related to different corrections for that. In the case of a half a block of Clark, we actually removed all of the concrete pavement and re-engineered the section, the paving section. So, the work is complete, and we bring this change order to you for your consideration and recommend approval of it.
Very good. All right. Does anybody have any additional questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling Change Order Number Five. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Sir, yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling Change Order Number Five for Downtown Infrastructure Project. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Very good, aye. Motion passes. All right. Deliberate and act on CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project Number Nineteen, Grant Amendment Number Three. I could read that all off. You don't need to read it all.
I will explain it, Mayor Pro Tem. We do have a grant agreement with the State New Mexico Department of Finance Administration, the DFA, their local government division, for funding on the CDBG project that we just talked about. We have gone through a couple of amendments to the grant agreement. This is amendment number three to the grant agreement, and generally, what we're doing here, we're at the closeout phase of the project. There's still a little punchless work to be done in the field, but the project is essentially, is substantially complete, and we are truing up some of the unit price quantities on the project. So, we are adjusting amounts here. The change order that you approved would not affect grant funds, generally, it would affect the city's match. And so, anything that we did after that would be at city funds. But it would remind you that because of this inflation factor that we've had during the past year, DFA did approve cost overruns and additional funding, and Raton was a recipient of additional grant funds in addition to the initial grant funding of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Most recipients of the grant found out that when they bid, designed to bid the project, it costs a lot more than we estimated this in 2018 or 2019. And so, the State of Mexico did fund those cost overruns for everyone that applied for it, and Raton did receive that. So, that was one of the grant amendments, and we are truing that up. You would see and exhibit in here because it is a unit price bid, so it would be part of the closeout process.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Berry on this? I'll entertain a motion to approve CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project.
Make a motion to approve CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Downtown CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project Number Nineteen specifically, dash C, dash N R, dash I, dash zero one, dash G, dash sixteen, Grant Agreement Number Three. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. One more, Item L, Deliberate and Act on Recycling and Illegal Dumping Fund Grant Agreement Between the City of Raton and NMED Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, you do have a grant agreement in your packet. This is from the New Mexico Environment Department Solid Waste Bureau. This is in regard to a grant application submitted by our Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, earlier in the year to the RAID program. RAID stands for Recycling and Illegal Dumping Act. They have offered to fund our project to the amount of ten thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Generally, we would be looking at buying equipment related to recycling for a new transfer station. We would be looking at hoppers for our four primary waste streams and recycling materials that would facilitate and make easier the transfer of that from the collection point to the bays. So, we would generally buy those four hoppers for our recycling operations there.
Very good. I know, I'm really pleased with the recycling operation. I know, you know, it would be nice if things were expanded, and, but let's start with what we've got and do it well, and then move on from there.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, I would say that operations at the transfer station are really working well. It's a much better environment than, you know, what we did before outside in the weather, both transfer operations and recycling. I'm really pleased with, really doing well.
Yeah, I agree. Anybody have any questions regarding Item L?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Recycling and Illegal Dumping Fund Grant Agreement Between the City of Raton and the NMED Project RAID FY23-NT06. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Berry, I happen to know that Joel came with a question for the city commission, and even though he missed items for citizens present by about a minute and a half, do we want to agree to allow him a few minutes to?
It's certainly okay with me, Mayor Pro Tem, at the pleasure of the commission.
Anybody have any objection?
No objection.
All right, go ahead.
No objection. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'm kind of in a dead zone, so if I drop out, I'll call back.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right.
I'm Joel Sanderson. It sounds like about the church, brewery, a fencing company, and a construction company at the end. About what it sounds like. I came to you guys several months ago over this letter you sent out, on the charges, a hundred dollars a year, first year, two hundred and fifty the second year, what is it, five hundred the third year, seven fifty the fourth year, a thousand the fifth year. And I told you, I said, okay, I'm gonna buy a year-round fireworks license. Here, I spent a month working on last weekend to put together Customer Appreciation Day. I left the store up here at nine fifteen on Saturday. I've been down there since about five thirty to go to Maxwell to get my other store open. And I get to the Naha, and my phone starts ringing off the wall, telling me I've got to shut down, or I can't sell fireworks, I gotta cover everything with them. And I went and spent all this money on advertising, more merchandise. We were giving away hot dogs and cokes and twenty percent off. I don't know what you want. You want me to open more, now you want to close me down. Now, explain it to me.
Who called you?
Mayor Pro Tem, I would be happy to.
And let me back up. Is City Hall not open on Friday?
Well, if that's the question, City Hall is open on Friday, yes.
Well, I called it, apparently I couldn't get ahold of you. I never got an answer.
Yep.
Several times. Has the phone broke?
Phone's not broken.
Well, what's going on?
Well, let me explain this.
What do you want from me?
Let me explain this.
I guess that's what I want to ask.
Okay. I'll be happy to explain this to Mr. Sanderson and to the commission. This is governed by state statute, and so, you can get a license that has a term of a year, but that doesn't mean that you can sell fireworks every day. It's governed by state statute. And what the state statute states is that you can sell fireworks from June 20th to July 6th, and you can sell it on September 16th around New Year's Day, Chinese New Year, and Cinco de Mayo. And there's one exception to that rule, and we're not talking about city ordinance, we're talking about state statute. And that is, if you have a permanent retail business, number one, and that's not the case here, and number two, it is oriented to tourism, and that's also not applicable here. So, Mr. Sanderson, you still have to follow the state statute.
Huh?
You still have to follow state statute.
I am.
You were in violation of the state statute.
I bought a state license, a state license that says I can sell year-round.
I don't mean to debate with you, but you have to know the law, and you have to follow the law.
Okay, well, why didn't you tell me something when I brought that up? Okay, well, why didn't you tell me something when I brought that up?
I sent you a copy of the state statute. I said, this is the state statute.
I never got it.
You have to follow that. We've had this conversation, Mr. Sanderson.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna do you a favor, Mr. Berry. Here's you a deal for what I lost to the city of Rattown. And don't send me no more letters.
You have my answer.
Want more money?
I'm not here to debate with you, but I have answered your question.
No, you haven't. That's not what it... The state fire marshal told me on Friday that he can't control the city. And as far as tourism, it's not a tourist attraction, no. But I sell more merchandise to people out of town than I do in town.
It does not comply with state statute. As simple as that.
Well, why didn't you approach me before all this?
I have sent you the state statute.
I haven't seen it.
And I offered to talk to you about it. You know this. You're in the business. Learn the law and follow the law, Joel. It's as simple as that.
Well, you sat right here three or four months ago.
This is a regulated business.
You sat here three or four months ago, and you... When I said I'll buy a year-round license, you said, well, I don't know the fireworks law.
I also copied it for you, and I sent it to you.
I didn't need it, Scott.
The ordinance and the state statute.
Where is it?
You're in the business, you've never read the state statute?
Sure I have.
Then you know what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm open down there.
Then you know what I'm talking about.
No, I don't.
You still have to follow the law, even if you don't understand it. You still have to follow it.
All right. I'll tell you what.
You just don't send me no more letters, want more money, because I'm not open. You understand?
If you fall under the vacant building ordinance, you will get notified on that. That will happen.
Well, I'll send it back to you.
That's okay.
Let me ask you a question, if you don't mind. So is the fire marshal allowing you to keep your Maxwell store open?
Yes. He knows all about it. He told me that it's... He can't control the city.
Same statute applies statewide, Mayor Protem.
Well, you sell fireworks year-round.
Well, I'm gonna make a suggestion that perhaps you could make an appointment with Mr. Berry.
Oh, I've already been down that road, Lendy.
We've had that conversation, I provided him the state statute.
I haven't seen it, Scott.
He has not followed it. It's as simple as that.
I'll call the fire marshal again tomorrow.
You still have to follow the law, Mr. Sanderson?
I'll call the...
You have to know the law, and you have to follow the law.
Well, I'm not arguing now.
You're in a regulated industry.
I'm not arguing now.
You have to understand the law, you have to follow it.
I pay sales tax, I buy a city license, I pay insurance, I pay everything.
That's all good, but follow the law.
Okay.
As simple as that.
All right. I'll follow the law.
That'd be a good start.
But just quit sending me letters.
You have to follow every...
That's what started it.
You have to follow every regulation.
That's what started it, was the letter. And I told you I was going... I stood right here and told you I was going to get a year-round fireworks license, and I'd be open more. And you were all for that.
No, sir, I gave you the state statute.
Am I right or wrong?
You're wrong. I gave you the state statute.
I haven't seen the state statute, Scott. How many times do I have to tell you that?
You're in a regulated business, you should know the law. How many times do I have to tell you that?
Is it available?
You know the law.
I read it. I sent it to you.
Well, I'm gonna call the state fire marshal again tomorrow and talk to him. He told me he didn't have no control over the city. But that's what he told me.
You might ask him to give you a copy of the statute. And then if you conform to the statute, there's no problems.
Right.
But the city can't back you up on breaking the statute.
Well, I'm just asking for a little help here.
Well, that's what I would, as me, I would suggest that you find out what the law is to you by getting that state statute.
Well, I am, I'm gonna call the state fire marshal again tomorrow. And tell him to give him the statute. Then it was my mistake
Copy it to every...
To open a business in Rattown. So what I should do is put a big banner, a fifty-foot banner on the side of the building, that do not open a business in Rattown, they'll shut you down. Go Rattown.
Joel, I'll...
Is that what you want?
Joel, I'll get you a copy of that statute, okay? By next week, we'll have it for you, okay?
All right. But I'm sorry, but I don't think Neil's dad would go along with what's been going on with me and this city for a long time. He was a businessman. I know my dad would be in here raising him.
Mayor Protem, I don't know if you want to continue the debate, but Mr. Sanderson has numerous violations of statute and ordinance. And all we're asking is one thing. Follow the statute, follow the ordinance.
Okay, I will.
And you get along great. Well, all you have to do is not violate the law, Joel.
I came in here, Mark, Scott, and I told you guys, I stood right here.
Mayor Protem, I don't know if you want to continue having the debate, but I'll do it if you allow.
I'll buy a year-round fireworks license. He said, quote, unquote, "I don't know the fireworks law."
So I looked it up, and I mailed you a copy.
Okay.
Joel, I'll get you...
I provided you a copy.
I've never seen it, Scott.
It was sent to you.
Well, that's all I'm saying.
I can't advise you legally. You need to know your... You're in a regulated business, you need to know the law. We can keep going.
Yeah.
That's just the fact.
I know you're upset, and I understand that you're... You know why. It's... But I promise I will get you a copy of that personally.
I'll call the state fire marshal again tomorrow.
And that's a good idea, talk to him and see what he has to say. And then if you don't mind, you can go ahead and report back to me what the fire marshal said.
I will.
And we can move on from this, but it... Because it really isn't something that the city commission meeting can... You know, here at this meeting, we can do anything about, except listen to you. And I think we've heard...
All I'm asking is, what do you want me to do?
Well, I...
Open four days a year?
I think...
But don't send me no more letters.
We are...
For not being closed.
And I think we've already agreed that we work with businesses to kind of... You know, the point is to keep your building looking like it's...
Everyone had my phone number.
Right.
Friday at nine thirty.
Yeah.
Why couldn't you approach me a month ago and said, hey, we're not going to allow this to have some kind of discussion? No.
We've had a discussion with Mr. Sanderson for a number of years on following the law as far as fireworks, and there have been numerous violations previously. And the attempt to sell on these dates was also a violation of state law.
I understand.
I feel that we've heard your complaint, but we need to go no further this way.
That's right. So thank you.
Well, I'm just asking you, what do you want me to do?
Follow the law, please.
Okay.
All right.
Follow the laws.
Well, I'm trying.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
I had a young man in his early twenties down in Maxwell on Saturday, and I told him what happened. And he said, I can't believe that Rattown would turn anything away.
Well, we're trying to just keep it...
Well, did you tell him that you were in violation of state ordinance by doing that, by state statute? Did you go over that with him? With the young man? What did he say about that?
I'm going to ask you both to please just take a breath and back off, okay? We need to finish this meeting up. Thank you. All right. Moving on, city manager report.
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, I report that I attended a meeting of the New Mexico Transportation Commission held on July twenty-first. It was held in Las Vegas. I made a presentation to the Transportation Commission asking for their support and prioritization of the Interstate twenty-seven development. It's something that you all talked about at the last meeting, and I have sent the resolution to all of the Transportation Commission members, as well as the new cabinet secretary, that's Ricky Serna. So we would look forward to having a conversation with Mr. Serna in Santa Fe regarding the next steps on the Interstate twenty-seven. We have talked about that with the town of Clayton, Union County, and Colfax County as well, so we'll be working on that and try to keep that conversation going. I did, along with Michael Ann Antinucci, city clerk, attended a five-year capital improvement plan discussion in regard to Rattown Municipal Airport. In attendance was Federal Aviation Administration, New Mexico State Aviation, our consultant, Mozen Korman, and Express Aviation. We did talk about the five-year priorities for the airport, and potential funding for the airport would include our non-primary entitlement, competitive AIP funding, bipartisan infrastructure law funding, and state-only grant funding sources. So we will bring an airport project to you at the next meeting, and that will be an application for federal funding, and I'll go into more detail on what we're proposing for the airport over the next five years. That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Very good. Very good. Anybody have anything else to add to this meeting?
Not me.
Are you still there, Commissioner Chatterley?
I am. I just... It's hard for me to hear for some reason. I had one small thing. I had a resident of Rattown who lives by the ARS Building. Called me today and suggested, I guess there's some property for sale east of the ARS Building, and she suggested that it might be a nice place for a neighborhood park. I don't know if that's something the city would be able to ever do, but that was something she wanted me to bring up to everyone's attention.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mayor Sagata, are you still with us?
Still there. Nothing further to comment.
All right. Very good. Nothing from any of us, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.